Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, if we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got the dog?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the November 2nd meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kayla has our dog from the dog pound today.
Come on. See how friendly this one is?
I was getting wild up, Ted.
Our featured pet this week is about a six-year-old female lab mix. Great temperament. Come here, look at the camera. Come on, I want to see you. Come on, sit down there. Can you sit? You listen like my kids. There you go. Great dog. She's looking for a good home. She'll be available on Saturday at 3 o'clock for adoption. And the cane corset from a few weeks ago actually was picked up by a rescue group yesterday, correct, Jack?
Correct.
So he's in a good home, too. So stop by our kennel. How many dogs we got right now, Jack?
Uh, 34.
We have 34 other dogs to pick from if you don't want her.
At 10 o'clock, we're going to have a poll carrying on the proposed vacation of South Hattaway Street, unimproved, 1.1556 acres, an original lot, number eight, Carlisle Homes allotment, Carlisle Township. And we are going to move number 19 at this point.
Please, to start the meeting.
Under the Sheriff, approve and enter an agreement with the City of Alariah to lease a portion of their city jail to House County Female Population, effective January 1st, 2012.
Also move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Sheriff or Chief Whitley from Alariah who's joining us today? I actually just spoke about this morning, I was at Lorraine County Mayors and Managers' Association about the approach of partnering with other communities to save dollars and perform more services.
Thanks, Commissioners. Good morning, everybody. We've been talking about this since that Alariah jail closed in 2009, but we got kind of serious within the last year or so. Chief Whitley, myself, and his staff, and my staff, we think this is going to be a positive partnership, obviously, between the Sheriff's Office and Alariah Police Department. We've collaborated already, you know, within the last year with Alariah Police, and, you know, on work, they're in close proximity to us, so we're actually working with them closely, with our Narco unit, with the Drug Task Force, with Chief Deputy Cavanaugh and their Narco unit. So we're kind of partnering that way already. So we're, and we're looking at other avenues, and obviously, this is what the public demands nowadays, is that we work together and not duplicate services, and obviously, be more cost-effective, try to save money, and that's what we're all trying to do right now. I do want to publicly thank Chief Whitley and his staff, Lieutenant Chris Constantino, Lieutenant Phil Hammons, and the entire Alariah City Council, and the Law Director, also Pete Schilling, and Mayor Grace. We were kidding, being the chief, when we first sat down, we probably had about a three-page document. We said, once attorneys got involved, it turned into about 14 pages. But, but we know there's a lot of legal things that must be in there. I also want to thank all three Lorraine County Commissioners, they've known about this for a while, the County Administrator Cortez, and Assistant Prosecutor Jerry Ennis, he's done a lot of work on this MOU that we put together. Also Chief Deputy Cavanaugh, but I especially want to thank my jail commander, Lieutenant Jack Hammond. He's not here today, his dad just passed away, but he's done a tremendous job looking at this stuff here and trying to think of everything, and obviously, you know, we're looking at no extra cost. And that's what makes this plan so well, that we're taking, you know, our staff are ready to move over to Alariah, which will be the 19 female matrons that we have, to operate that when we move the females over there to the 54 beds. It's also going to open up some programs that we can't do right now at the county jail, just because of the physical plant. We can't properly segregate the female inmates, and we don't run the proper programs because we don't have a special needs area to put them in, like we have for the men. Over in Alariah, we're going to have that. We worked with the union also, the OPBA out there, with the corrections officers, and I think we finally got this thing to fruition where we can get it. Obviously, it's going to free up 56 more beds for males, where the females were at, which is going to help us immensely. As you know, I've been talking about House Bill 86, which is the criminal sentencing law that was passed by the legislature, where they're going to free up about 10,000 felony fours and fives out of the state institutions. Well, all 88 sheriffs in the county at our meetings, we know it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out some of these are going to end up in the county jails, and I think this will help free up some space for that. Which will move our legal population to 476 inmates. And like I say, once again, there's no added personnel. We have a 90-day escape clause in this, just as well as Alariah does, so the worst-case scenario is it doesn't work and we go back to the way we were before, but I don't foresee this thing not working. Me and Chief Whitley have a great rapport, and any bumps that we have in the road here, I believe that we can work out between us. So we're looking at the first of the year, it could be possibly sooner than that, but obviously, they have to unshutter the jail and get things ready that way, and then obviously, we've got to make some changes in our policies and procedures. But I'll let Chief Whitley go ahead and say a couple words also.
I just wanted to thank everybody involved in this. Working in government for 21 years, I've never seen anything go as smoothly as this has, especially considering the magnitude of what it is. I think it just goes to show that everybody sees this as a positive, and we need to do more of this. I hope this is a springboard to future collaborations in what we do as a city and as a county. I hope other agencies can use this as an example and move forward, and, because it just makes Lorraine County as a whole look that much better. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you. Very proud of what you guys have accomplished.
Commissioners, I would just mention, there is one typo error in the lease agreement I have that we have to get changed, so I probably will not have the document ready till next week for signature.
Okay.
Under Resolution Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Preparations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advances?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions under indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez is out today, be no reason for the Administrator to have an executive session, have to see if the prosecutor does under his comments.
Would you like to approve the summary sheet?
Yeah.
Now?
Motion to approve the Personnel Summary Sheet?
Yes, second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and waive the reading of the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of October 26, 2011?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Accept the Finley-Davis Actuary Report and Restabilization Lorraine County Healthcare Rates and Contribution Shares for Employees for the Year 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
It's actually only a dollar or two more per month, per employee.
3% was the increase.
Yeah, and I saw on the news yesterday, averaged out a 7% increase, so I think we were doing pretty well with our insurance carrier and how we run our program, so it's good news. I think it's like $1,300 a month total for, per employee, which is, that's a lot of money for the amount of employees that we cover in the county, but we're doing, doing a good job here.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development, approve Donald B. Eager and Associates LLC to provide fair housing services and clients with CDVG-FY-11 in the amount of $10,000 effective October 11, 2011 through August 1st, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve Change Order Number 1 to Crossroads Asphalt Columbia Station for Texas and Nada Street Sheffield Township, as recommended by the County Engineer. They will delete the Pulmanix roadway and base, aggregate base and asphalt emulsion for a deduction of $30,590, and add cement stabilized, subgraded, costs $26,547.40, a savings of $4,042.60.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Golden Acres, approve and enter a service agreement with Master Textile Management Cleveland for laundering linens at a cost of $1.99 per day, per patient. Previous years, it was $2.25 per day, per patient, a savings of $6,000 per year. This is effective retroactive October 1st, 2011 through September 30, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services?
I actually have a, kind of a surprise proclamation, in the matter of expressing our appreciation and best wishes to Margaret Peggy Thorpe on her retirement from the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services. Whereas, you want to come up, Peggy? You, she's like, "Oh, no, I don't want to come up." Whereas, Margaret Thorpe announced retirement from her position as Assistant Program Administrator, effective November 30, 2011, and whereas, Peggy is now being recognized for 30 years of service to Lorraine County, beginning December 22, 1980, as an Investigator 1 through SITA, and whereas, on May 31, 1981, she became an Income Maintenance Worker 2 at Human Services, then was promoted several times throughout her tenure, beginning on September 2, 1984, to Social Program Specialist. December 7, 1987, took a voluntary demotion to Income Maintenance Worker 2, then promoted to Income Maintenance Worker 3 on October 31, 1988, and then reassigned to Income Maintenance Worker 3E on July 1, 1990. She was then promoted to Social Program Specialist on April 22, 1991, and a lateral transfer to Contract Evaluator Negotiator 1 on August 3, 1998. Under the new class plan, became Contract Evaluator on December 17, 2000, and then promoted on May 16, 2005, to Assistant Program Administrator, and whereas, Peggy is a caring, very cooperative, dependable worker, who will pitch in wherever help was needed, and all her untiring efforts, dedication, and humanitarian kindness will be remembered by her fellow workers. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lorraine County, Ohio, that we hereby express appreciation for the faithful, conscientious, and rewarding service given to Margaret Thorpe to the Lorraine County and its citizens. We wish Peggy and her husband Jim a very healthy, peaceful retirement as she pursues her hobbies and interests for many years to come, and continue riding the horses. I didn't know that. I'm jealous. Sign your Board of Commissioners, Ted Kayla, Lori Kowski, and Tom Williams.
A few words? You've been paroled. Nope.
I'll pass.
Thank you, Peggy.
I don't know, I think she may get you for that, because you let out her secret. She doesn't look old enough to retire.
No, she doesn't. I agree.
She started at 12.
No, I think she's going to get me after this meeting. All right, number 16, authorize purchase service agreement with Maholic Maintenance Alariah for snow piling, salting services for state year 1112, effective November 1st, 2011 through April 30, 2012, in the amount not to exceed $10,000. Authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, approve as to form and amend for changes in service and content and increased value.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize maintenance and support services agreement CGI Technologies and Solutions Inc. for supportive application, software and software updates for document imaging department. This is effective January 1st, 2012 through December 31, 2012, in the amount not to exceed $110,886, and authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, approve as to form and amend for changes in service content and increased value.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize and approve Work Participation Corrective Compliance Plan to meet the federal all-family and two-parent work participation rates in fiscal year 12.
So moved.
Second.
And I believe, I don't know if Ms. Kowski or Marge wants to say anything, because this is a new kind of program. No?
No.
No?
Okay.
No? No, come on up and let us know what's going on. Don't be shy. We know you're not.
We thought you were just here for Peggy today.
Well, we are. She, she was surprised. She didn't know she was going to be honored today.
That's why the Saw contract wasn't on last week.
Yeah, right. We orchestrated this, Peggy. We're here today to ask for your, for you to pass a resolution on our corrective action plan. I know the County Commissioners' Association is communicating with the Commissioners about Ohio's work performance statistics. As a whole, the state is not meeting the federal requirements for the, all-family were supposed to be at 50%, and for the two-parent, we're supposed to be at 90%. And in Lorraine County, we're at 36% and 61%, respectively. So because Ohio's not meeting the requirements, we're required to do a corrective act plan. We've got 12 months to get our act together, and we're required to have anyone that's applying for cash assistance participating in an employment and training program of some sort. And Marge oversees that particular area, so we're just here asking for you to pass the resolution so we can get where we need to be.
Wonderful.
I think we're moving in the right direction. We've got some diversion plans, we're doing some orientation, we're tightening up our rules and regulations as far as what clients are required to do.
And our monitoring pieces as well.
Yeah. So I think we'll, we'll be there, but it's going to take us a while, I mean, you know, it's not going to turn around overnight, but we expect that we'll meet our requirement by the end of the fiscal year.
Do we get penalized if we don't?
Well, the whole state will, is facing a $32 million, I believe, $32 million sanction. So yes, this is very real, and the state would have to take that money out of GRF, which would mean there'd be less money for somewhere else, and all counties would participate whether you met the requirement or not. So this is a big issue for the entire state and all the JFS.
It affects all the counties.
Is this a new guideline, or it's always been in place and we just haven't met it this time?
Right. This was part of welfare reform, which came about in 1997, when President Clinton signed the Prowara bill in the Rose Garden, and Ohio got to take advantage of caseload reduction. So we met the requirement by reducing our caseloads, but then, and I believe it was in '05, '05, the, we could no longer take credit for the caseload reduction, but it was sort of like, that's when things started going south with the economy and, and what have you, and the federal government just kind of looked the other way because there were other issues. Well, now, they're saying with less funding, we're not going to look at the other way, you're still required to meet the requirements, and if you don't, we're going to penalize you. So there are only nine states that are actually meeting the requirement, so we're not alone, you know, the state of Ohio is not alone. Some of the states are still getting credit for caseload reduction, but we got it early on, we can't take advantage of it now, so it's, it's going to be a challenge, no question about it.
Definitely.
So only nine states are meeting it? Yeah, I think instead of doing a resolution right now, what we may want to do is actually contact our state rep, state senator, find out what information they have on it, and to make a decision based on that, instead of just passing a resolution to say, fix something that the other 41 states aren't fixing right now, so.
Well, maybe we could do that in conjunction.
I think it's important by resolution, right. You can do that as a follow-up, but yeah.
Yeah, the res-
You have to pass a resolution so we can start the program.
Right. The plan has to be approved by the end of November.
Okay.
Okay?
Do you have a plan written?
Yes, you have it.
Okay.
Yeah, we submitted it. I think Teresa gave it to all the Commissioners, and it spells out the specifics of what we want to do.
For Lorraine County. It's how we're addressing the problem, to comply.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more questions, Tom?
I'm on-
Do you want Teresa to give you a copy of it?
Yeah, I didn't get a-
Well, it's in the board business.
It's in the board business.
Okay.
We didn't each get a copy of it, it just went through board.
No, just in the board.
Yeah. I would prefer to wait till next week in order to actually read it. I don't like passing resolutions without reading stuff, so.
You even know the two of us have already covered it, so they need to get going on their plan.
Okay.
Pardon?
You signed it.
You signed it.
Yeah. I don't read any.
This would basically mean less people getting services that need services if we were to get, take that big cut.
Well, the $32 million in GRF, that's a general revenue fund, it could come from anywhere and everywhere.
To meet the needs.
Right. So it's not a-
Yeah.
To think that the federal government's going to go against 41 states, I think that's-
It's federal law. I guess that's, and when Ohio, when the auditors were in Ohio and they pulled case records, the, the records did not even reflect any activity, and so they felt that Ohio wasn't making a good faith effort to try-
Just ignored them.
Right. To try to implement what was required, so they're really holding our feet to the fire in Ohio as far as, you've got to, anybody that's on cash assistance has to be in a, an employment component or an educational component, because they, they have three years to get themselves off of assistance. So in order for them to be ready, to be on their own, we need to work with them.
Any more questions, Mr. Williams?
No.
Okay.
Motion's on the floor.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cortez not here. Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Two things, Commissioners. One, the paperwork regarding Green Acres is just about being wrapped up.
Wonderful.
So I think we probably will close that transaction within the next week, all right? Secondly, I would like to add my personal congratulations to Peggy. Peggy and I have, it is, she's one of the people that is a true joy to work with, and I've worked with her for several years now. And, you know, anybody who thinks that public employees aren't dedicated and hardworking should, should just see Peggy in action, and I know Mary Lou's going to miss her, and I'm going to miss her, and she's also one of those people, most of the time when I call her, instead of giving her advice, I usually ask her, "Peggy, what am I doing?" You know? And she, she gives me more information, so good luck to you, Peggy, but I hope Mary Lou told you that we have a case we've been working on for about three years, and, you know, you can't go until we get that certain case done, yeah? So good luck, and thanks for your help through all the years, Peg.
Commissioners, report.
Well, I missed you guys last week, but everything on my surgery went fine, so glad to be back, so I have no report.
Last week, we held our last public meeting on this 1/4% temporary sales tax at Sheffield Township. It went very well, we had a nice turnout there, and I'll let Mr. Williams talk about during his report. But I am urging everyone to support Issue 22 next Tuesday, if you get a chance, early voting's good through Friday. We really need the money. Also, I had the Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce Board meeting. I sent on the board there, going over issues moving forward, funding issues, fundraising, and the such. Also today, difficult week. We lost a man who has served not only the Democrat Party in Lorraine County, but the county as a whole. Vic Stewart Jr. passed away, and a lot of us can say he was a mentor and a friend, and they'll be doing a showing today at St. Jude's, and then tomorrow's the funeral, but we did do a proclamation to present to the family. In the manner of honoring Vic F. Stewart Jr. and his many years of service to Lorraine County, Victor F. Stewart, 85, Alariah, passed away peacefully at EMH Healthcare, surrounded by his family and his loving wife Helen, on Saturday, October 29. Victor was born October 3, 1926, and resided in Alariah for over 80 years. He was a graduate of Alariah High School and John Carroll University. Mr. Stewart served his country in the US Army in the Pacific Theater, was a member of VFR Post 1079, American Legion Post 12, and AMBETES Post 32. Victor was a founding member of St. Jude Church and Holy Name Society, was also a fourth-degree Knight of Columbus, who is also a member of Alariah Kiwanis and Alariah J.C.'s. Victor was employed as an insurance agent by Aetna Life and Casualty, a member of the Million Dollar Roundtable, and was president of Stewart Benham Insurance Agency. He was also founding director of Pioneer Federal Savings and Loan. Victor was very involved with the community as a CYO basketball coach and Little League North baseball coach, is a member of the Alariah Sports Hall of Fame, is a former member of Alariah Memorial Hospital Board of Directors, and he served on the Board of Trustees of Lorraine County Community College. Mr. Stewart began his political endeavor in 1950, serving on Alariah City Council, was elected council president in 1958, he was appointed mayor at each 33 in 1959. He was the Alariah Democrat Party Chairman for 18 years, he was the Lorraine County Party Chairman for seven years, a member of the Lorraine County Board of Elections for 30 years. He attended three presidential conventions, and he was a voting member of the Electoral College. He was a friend of US Senators, including Sherrod Brown, Governors of Ohio, including Dick Celeste, Congresswoman Sut, Nan Capter, and Presidents Jimmy Carton and Lyndon Johnson, and many local officials. Vic Stewart was a noble civic and community member of Lorraine County, and he truly will be missed by his wife, 10 children, 25 grandchildren, eight great-grandchildren, and several cousins, nieces, and nephews, as well as the many friends. Therefore, be it resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, we hereby honor Victor F. Stewart and his many years of public service to Lorraine County, as memory will continue to inspire for many years. Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, Ted Kayla, Lori Kowski, and Tom Williams. We'll give this to the family today or tomorrow, but he was a great guy.
He was.
Going to miss Vic.
Yep, absolutely.
End of my report.
On Friday, uh, I made a, I did a tour at the jail, and, um, again, you give the sheriff a lot of credit for what's going on there. Um, first thing I recognized when I toured the jail is the, whoever really set that jail up, uh, the architect was just, uh, didn't have a good understanding of what they did in that facility. Putting walls up where the, and stations where the correction officers are supposed to be monitoring, two to three stations, uh, it's just unreal. Um, and then the individuals that the correction officers have to deal with every day, um, I, I give the men and women a lot of credit there. Um, it's, uh, no nonsense, very basic jail. There's not a lot going on there, and, um, it, it's, it's an impressive operation with the limited staff that they have there. So I want to thank the, um, men and women that, uh, gave me some time to tour me, to, um, show me the facility, and also to the sheriff for a great job that he does out there. That's, uh, end of my report.
Madam Clerk?
Um, Commissioner Williams is going to present a proclamation tonight to Locata for thirty years of service under Board Correspondence.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
It's ten o'clock, ma'am.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do our public hearing. Today's proposed vacation in South Hattaway Street, unimproved, containing one point five five six acres and original lot eight, Carlisle Home allotment, was submitted by Carlisle Township, requesting the Commissioners to vacate on May second, two thousand eleven. Resolution eleven, three fifty-seven, June eighth, authorized Commissioners to be petitioner. July seventh, two thousand eleven, petition was forwarded to County Engineer for review, and by letter dated July seventh, stated the road is part of Carlisle Homes allotment, as recorded in Recorder's Record, Volume Thirteen, Page Six, and legal description map accurately describes the area of the proposed vacation township. August tenth, utility companies were notified and Columbia Gas stated there are no facilities in the area. Resolution eleven, six forty-six, October fifth, received and journalized petition, proposed vacation, setting the viewing and hearing. The viewing will be, was held on October twenty-first at ten. Publication was in the Chronicle on October seventh and fourteenth, and five property owners were notified.
Thank you.
Mr. Malletti's here from the Engineer's Office.
Great. Uh, Jerry, can you, uh, give the other one who may be giving testimony?
Okay. Anybody who's gonna testify, stand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give shall be the truth, as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
Wayne, do you have any comments in regards to this? You and I went out and looked at it a couple of weeks ago. It seems pretty simple.
Morning, Wayne Malletti, County Engineers Office. Uh, yes, the viewing was on October twenty-first, and yourself, myself, and Bob Swor of Carlisle was there, along with Doug Hassel of our office. Uh, no property owner showed up at the viewing.
Because it was too cold out.
Uh, it wasn't raining, I don't think.
It wasn't raining, though.
Yeah. And, uh...
Control all of it.
The, um, the, the property, the piece of Hattaway right-of-way is fifty by one thirty-five, a small piece, and, uh, currently the, uh, we noticed that the, uh, adjacent property owners are using the land for vehicles and parking, and part of driveways are in place. So, uh, it was requested by the trustees to vacate the land, and as the clerk has stated, the legal description correctly follows the map, so that's our findings, and it's, we'll be up to vote for you Commissioners. Thank you. Unless there's any questions.
He wasn't sworn, well, he wasn't sworn in, so...
He wasn't sworn in, sir.
You can stand up and be sworn.
Or he may just have a question.
I just have a question.
You want to come up to the podium?
But he's a property owner, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Jerry?
We might as well swear, you certainly, you might want to make some comments. Do you swear or affirm that the statements you shall make shall be the truth, and as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
I do.
Your name, please, sir?
Matthew De Durck.
And your address?
Four oh eight, seven nine Carlisle Avenue. I was just wondering what was gonna happen to the property. Is it gonna be put up for sale? Is it...
What happens, sir, is by law, the, uh, the property is divided one-half between the adjoining landowners, and it becomes their property.
Okay, then we'll be reevaluated for taxes and whatnot?
Probably.
And Hattaway Street goes across the street, too. My neighbor was wondering about that, too.
You have to ask the trustees. It looks like, I actually did the, uh, viewing. There's never gonna be a road there by any chance.
Right, right. There's two big oak trees in my side yard.
Yeah, and I was out there, so I mean, I would just see they would have to apply for that then with the township. Barry?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Wayne?
I believe that other north piece of Hattaway was vacated.
No, it was not.
No.
No, Teresa said it wasn't.
We have a resolution stating that we, Commissioners denied it back in nineteen ninety-nine.
So the property will be split up among me and my neighbor?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I was wondering.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Barry, or?
Any comments?
Any comments?
Trustees? No, not at all? Okay. We've already taken care of the property owners. Any property owners opposing who weren't sworn in? They can be sworn in again? Okay, need to close the meeting? The hearing?
Yep.
Motion closed.
Second.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
A resolution to authorize a vacation of the property?
Second.
Sorry, Commissioner, you have to make, in that resolution, that's based upon a finding that it will serve the public convenience and welfare, and it's necessary.
There you go.
As stated.
On your little sheet.
Motion as stated, right?
Yeah.
Okay, second.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment now? Anyone wishing to address the board?
On any topic? Oh, come on up.
Give me?
Absolutely. Always good to hear from you, because you bring up good ideas for our collection center.
Well, this is a report on what happened last Saturday, October twenty-ninth. We had our second shred day.
Okay.
Uh, wanna thank, uh, Shreddet Corporation for September twenty-fourth, and Shredding Network for last weekend for providing those services at no cost to the district. Uh, two-hundred-and-eighty-four vehicles entered the facility with shredding only. Uh, we had fifty-two additional mixed loads. It also had shredding. Made three hundred and thirty-six vehicles for shredding in, uh, in the three-hour period from nine to noon. That's two per minute. That's better than McDonald's. Uh, we did another eighty-eight vehicles rest of day, which made, made a record vehicle count for the center in one day of four twenty-four.
Wonderful.
All right?
Awesome.
And we did six point four tons of shredding.
Beautiful.
Nice job.
Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? Good morning, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth Rummix Oberlin. It's sort of late in the game, but nevertheless, uh, since election is not really until next Tuesday, um, I have, I noticed that the Lorraine Journal